Downstairs.
Okay.
Donna, is there some getting? Okay, Carol's gonna get it for you.
Actually, I thought everything was so clear.
Well, I think we can probably get it done tonight.
Carol's gonna be late, he's probably gotta practice.
He's not coming.
They're at a game tonight.
Oh, they got a game.
Yeah.
Away?
Uh, da-da-da, no. Westminster.
Oh, okay.
Oh, I'm sorry. Versus Westminster, yeah, Westminster.
So, we'll call the work session order. Do you need to take the roll, Donna, or do you just?
No, not for a work session.
Okay, not for a work session, all right. So, the work session tonight is on the budget, and to begin with, if we could have the presentation of the budget, if that will be from you, Ms. Roman, or you'll have Mr.?
From Mr. Dros, from Mr. Schner.
Ready? Let's go.
So, I gave you a handout of highlights. A handout of highlights, and I'll just rifle through these real fast, and stop me if you'd like. We have, in the budget, a projected fund balance of 10 percent. And you'll remember, that's our budgeted fund balance. The actual fund balance is always substantially higher than that, but that's our, that's our budgeted fund balance of 10 percent. We are estimating that we'll finish 2012 at 3.33 percent above where we ended up in 2011, and that in '13, primarily because of this big question about whether the fiscal cliff is gonna happen, what impact that might have on gas prices, whether we'll get more costs pushed down on us from the state because those costs being pushed down from the federal government, et cetera, et cetera. I just, I think the group just couldn't be real optimistic about 2013, so we went pretty darn conservative at 2 percent. Hopefully, hopefully that's conservative, and it'll be better than that in 2013. In the budget, we have accounted for raises, which I'll say it a couple different ways, and try to be clear about it. Some people will say it's a 4 percent raise, it's not exactly accurate. Some will say it's a guaranteed 2 percent raise, that's not exactly accurate. What it really is, is spending 4 percent of payroll on raises, broken down as follows. We're gonna shift the grid 1 percent to account for a bit of inflation, kind of a cost of living, just keeping up a little bit, not totally probably, but a little bit, so we don't get too far behind there. That's a good thing. The other is 1 percent for performance, so if the person has, with the term we use is, we don't say average, it's a different term than that, but it's a 3.0 on their performance review out of five, out of a scale of five. If their review is three or better, then according to the PAP, that is acceptable. Performance and...
What percent do we get that?
Probably about 95, 98 percent. How many people get at least a 3.0?
Yeah, probably 98.
Probably 98 percent of people get that.
You have, what, you said 3 percent? Or, I'm sorry?
No, if they have a 3.0 on their performance.
Oh, I see, I see.
Then they'll get that 1 percent.
Okay.
And then the other two is what we call compression figure, and the average that those three components come to is about 3.95 percent. So, if somebody would say, "What's the average raise?", they computed that to be about 3.95 percent. Now, Belinda, well, when I'm finished with this, we'll be able to give you more information on how that compression will actually be manifested throughout the workforce. But, think of this, if you have some folks who are, who've been on the job for a long time, and because they got the job just after we, the county stopped giving steps, and they just never moved along, maybe they were below minimum for a long time, and then we created a new scale, and maybe they brought them up to minimum, but they're still at the very beginning of that range, and they've kind of been stuck there. Those are people who, you might term as very compressed, in other words, how long they've been there, would be the degree of very, of how much they're compressed, and so they will get a larger raise than somebody who was newly hired, has been only in that job, and they're at the beginning. Yeah, they're probably a little bit compressed, because maybe they've been there a year or two, but not as much as that person's been there 10 or 12, or whatever it is, years. So, that's where you'll see the difference in how much of an increase those two people would get. The one that's more compressed will get more of an increase, the one that's less compressed will get less of an increase. Trying to spread those out again, like would have happened if there would have been regular movement along that pay grid. What the, what we're able to do with this 2 percent of payroll to address compression is to address about 50 percent of the compression problem. Okay? Now, that's, we said when we were here last year, or sometime during 2012, I can't remember when the last discussion was, that it was gonna take a lot of money. Well, 2 percent of payroll is, Bob?
Million, million one, something like that.
And so, we're taking a pretty good whack at it in one year to try to deal with compression. And Belinda can show you how they apply that money, and how it eats into those that are in that highly compressed area. So, that's, that's the raise situation, and you'll see that some of this revenue came from areas that we've all been talking about for a long time. The SRO, the School Resource Officers, we're getting $191,000 from that, and by a reduction in TIF payments of $250,000, those two items alone really would equate to about a 1.55 percent raise. So, it's significant, those two items toward dealing with the compression and the pay issues. Next, you see the health insurance. As you know, because we already passed an ordinance dealing with the health insurance for 2013, employees will see a 10 percent increase in health insurance cost and in premium, and the county will have a 15 percent. What that equates to, down a couple lines there, is overall, countywide, all funds, it'll cost $185,000, $186,000 to the employees, but the county's picking up a million one of that. So, sometimes there's a misunderstanding that it was 15 percent on the employee and 15 percent on the county that we're sharing the burden equally. Not even close, because the county pays, what, 80 percent or something of the insurance bill? Uh, red, two-thirds? Okay. 67 percent of the insurance bill, so 15 percent of that number is substantially higher than 15 percent of the employee portion. Let's see, what else? Yeah, and one of the reasons why we went with the 10 instead of the 15, because a good argument could be made that by not doing 15 percent on the employee and 15 percent on the county, that we're kind of shifting a burden a little bit higher to the county than we should, but the thought was, if we left it at 10, then nobody would see a net decrease in their paycheck. In other words, the lowest, the person that received the smallest increase in pay, maybe the 1 percent person, who's just seeing the grid shift 1 percent, at least their pay will make up for the increase in the cost of insurance. If we had done a 15 percent increase on insurance to the employees, then there would have been a few people, not a lot, but there would have been some people who actually would have seen their paycheck go down by some amount of money. Going down to 10 percent at least, nobody will have a net decrease in their paycheck. And then we get into, oh, there's a, you might remember the last few years, we, one of the big problems in our budget, cost of our budget, has been the loggers increase. Was it three years in a row?
At least two.
Three years in a row, we had to pay the maximum increase into loggers because of its poor performance, and that was $300,000 or so. And this year, actually, we were seeing a decrease because we finally caught up, and are seeing a better improvement there, to the 2, of $282,000. And Bob, if I mess any of this up, just jump in.
No.
Things you see continuing, just a reminder of how we have, over the years, tried to ease the burden on the general fund in various ways. Those aren't new, those are things that can continue on. And in 2013, some new items, again, not trying to unburden the general fund, but just things that affect the general fund, because of a really high utilization of prescription drugs by our employees, who's had people, you know, getting sick this year, unfortunately, and high utilization there, plus other claims on the self-insurance fund, we had to load in a million, $150,000. That fund is getting very, very low, and we had to do that this year. That's, that's cash right there, folks, and we had no choice, we had to do that. You can't, you can't let your self-insurance fund get to the point where you can't self-insure. So, we had to load that money in there, because it's claims, it's not that anybody did anything wrong, it's insurance claims, settlements, and the like. And that fund had been getting lower and lower, and we couldn't let it get any lower, so we had to put money back in that. No transfer to elections, that's a good thing for the general fund, because the balance that's in there right now should be sufficient to handle 2013, probably just one election in 2013. And we get into organizational funding, a couple changes there. We're increasing the University of Missouri Extension to $80,000, from $80,000 last year to $96,800 this year, and RCGA, you can see the increase there, and EDC as well. Community council, we're taking a little bit different approach to that this year. It used to be, we would, we would fund that through CAB, if I get that process correctly, but the amount had shrunk so small that what they really need, instead of, I think it was $15,000 or $20,000, that was being divvied up among all the agencies, so really wasn't having any impact anywhere. What they really needed was help in administering the program and the CDBG program, and so instead of directly putting money into CAB for, for the community council, we're taking that out, putting $25,000 in community developments budget to support that effort outside the county. So, hopefully, that will work okay. Other items that, just again, a reminder, that weren't funded, and now are funded in 2013, I'll start with those. We, we're filling the HR Generalist position, that's been vacant for three or four years. Their activity, and I've got all the documents, they proved that their level of employees applying for positions, vacancies that they have to fill, testing that they have to do, things like that. In other words, their activity in HR is at a level that it warrants that position being filled again. Similarly, the Building Division Manager, we left that unfunded for, let's say that was at least three years as well. The activity has increased, permit activity and all that, to the level that it warrants that position being filled again. As a matter of fact, the level is higher now than in, than in 2009. Estimated for 2013 is higher than in 2009. And what we required Wayne to do was to prove that they would pay, that the activity would pay for the position, because that's what they have to do in that division, is justify their cost that they pass along through permits, and prove that they have enough activity to justify and pay for that position. And then the Lead Housekeeper position is just, I've told this story too many times, you may be tired of it, but through all of our withholds and positions being left vacant, not filled, defunded, et cetera, et cetera, I think probably, in terms of bodies, the Facilities Department probably took a hit bigger than any other department. Just, it was just timing, people retiring, leaving, wasn't people getting fired or anything, it was just timing issue. And because times were tough, I didn't let Mike fill those positions. He had several key housekeeping positions that he's been without, and it just, you know, eventually push comes to shove, and you gotta do something, so I let him pick the one that was most crucial, to get the buildings cleaned, and this is the one that he picked to do it. So, he's still down several positions in housekeeping, but this is one that I thought was justified in, in filling. And then on new positions, I can go through each one of these. So, juvenile legal counsel is a position, the Missouri Supreme Court, and Steve will help me on this one if I get it wrong. Missouri Supreme Court basically said that some deputy juvenile officers are doing work they shouldn't be doing, they're doing legal work, and they shouldn't be doing that, and that was occurring in our office, in our department as well. They said, "You gotta have a lawyer doing that kind of work." So, I don't know, Steve met with Judge Zare and Ken Simmons, and, you know, they, they figured this out, that it was, that it was true, we gotta, we gotta fix this problem, so we have to hire another lawyer. And that will be in, in the juvenile department. The Circuit Court, you may recall, we had been splitting an FTE with the court for a number of years, and the court has impressed upon us the need for that being a full-time position instead of a part-time position, so that's a half of a FTE increase there. And corrections, it says two new nurses. In reality, it could be, but it's gonna be one or the other. It's either gonna be two new nurses or two contract nurses. What they needed was some flexibility. They like to have their own nurses, because that way they know who's coming in every day, and who's familiar with the inmates and that kind of thing. So, they like to have their own, they're hoping to be, all fill these positions, but we also know from history that they're difficult to fill, they'll always be difficult to fill at the jail, but what Larry's trying to do is, is get some consistency in the nursing there. So, if they fill these two, or one or whatever, of these two corrections nurses, then they just won't hire two contract nurses. So, it shows us two FTE, but the actual cost will be less, because contract nurses cost you more than FTE did.
So, that 69 would be split in half, or am I looking on the wrong line?
Um...
Two registered nurses, how much is the?
About 152.
Okay.
For two nurses, so that's what'll be in the budget, but they'll either spend it here, or they'll spend it on their contract nurses, one or the other, and they won't, they won't do both.
How many total nurses will that make for the department? It's all right, it's just, that's all right, don't worry about it.
Full-time nurses would be a lot cheaper than getting them from CHCs.
They, they are cheaper.
$65 an hour for them.
They're cheaper and more consistent, mainly it's consistency, because you don't know, even though you have a contract that says they have to provide nurses, the contract doesn't say it has to be Sue every time that comes in, and, you know, with that population, or really any of that situation, but I would say in that population, knowing the history of these inmates as much as possible is a good thing. Adding one Deputy Sheriff in the general fund, and the sheriff provided the data on the increased number of calls for service, and going back to 2009, and we thought it was justified based on that, that he had one deputy. And finally, the IS reorganization. For, for at least three years, sitting here at the table, I've said, "There's a department that concerns me more than any other." Some of you have asked me which one, and if you did, I told you, it was IS. That was the department that worried me the most. And we had a horrible crash of the system on July 7th, 2011, 12:45 PM, and we need to fix the IS department, folks. I committed at that time that we were gonna find the answers as to, not what went wrong, we know what physically went wrong in the IS department, the servers crashed, you know, we know what happened. We'll probably, we'll never know why they physically crashed. It could have been a manufacturing defect, it could have been the housing got dropped when it was moved from the old IS data center to the new one, who knows? They crashed. The problem is, were they prepared for the crash with backups in place, redundancy, et cetera, et cetera? And it turns out, they were not. So, we are, and Simon Wong, our new IS director, is, and Joanne, actually, Joanne's leading the charge on this, because it's consistent that way. She was there before Simon came, and she's still there, she's leading it, and other reasons as well, she's leading that, that program. To find a firm that will not only maybe give us a little information about the crash itself, probably not, because it's too far gone, but they'll be able to say why the backups didn't work, that should have worked. What are we gonna do about it for the future? And, for me, maybe most importantly, where are we at, and how do we get to a grade A first-class IS department? It's painfully clear from the departments of this county that your IS department runs county government. We are so dependent on that department to do everything from A to Z in county government. You have to have a reliable, customer-service-driven IS department. I believe that the key to that is the leader of that department, I believe Simon is the guy to do that, and I believe that the resources that I did not allow to be made available up to this point in time, because I didn't think the timing was right for a variety of reasons, the timing is now right to get that department the way it should be. And I, every department director that came before our group, as we go through the budget with all the department directors, I told every single one of them, that had requests for new people, I said, "I got it, I got it, I understand what you want, you know, you want two of these, and one of those, and, you know, that kind of thing." I said, "I got it, but, just so you know, this year I'm gonna get IS right, folks. And if we got any money left to hoard, then we'll try to get, you know, this one that you want, and that one that somebody else wants," and that kind of thing. We didn't just throw the money at IS. Simon, with the small amount of time, it seems like he's been here for six months, he's been here in effect, maybe six weeks, eight weeks at the most, you know, has done his best to understand what he's got to work with, where he wants to go, and how he's gonna get there. What we put together here is a, I'll say, not to be fair to him, but kind of a best guess of how we wanna get there, and I'll say it that way for, I'll say it that way for one reason. He doesn't know exactly what he's gonna need, but he's got a really good guess, so we're phasing it in, so that if in July, he ends up not needing some of those engineers that he's hiring in July that we have in the budget, maybe, maybe he realizes in July, eh, it wasn't four engineers, it was three engineers and one additional database administrator. He'll, you know, we've got time to get that right, this is his best guess. He wants to start off right away in January with, with two FTE, four in July, and then I'll explain these others. This looks like seven and a half people. Effectively, it's not, and I'll tell you why. Number one, he's not filling the Assistant IS Director position, so that knocks that seven and a half down to six and a half. He doesn't, they got too many chiefs and not enough indians over there, and he realized that, too many levels of management, he's not getting rid of one of those. He knows it's gonna be more of a burden on him, and Dave probably, but that's, that's their plan, so that's one off of that seven and a half. We also have a contractor, the company called TRNL Electric, they pull wire and cable for the department. The cost of that contract equals about two people. They know this, so I'm not saying anything out of school, they know that contract's gonna end at the end of June, that's when it's up, and that, that pays for two people. So, now three, seven and a half, we're down to four and a half people, and, and there's one other that is actually, well, two others, I'm missing one. Oh, the hourly employee is about three-fourths of a, of an FTE right now, so it's not an additional FTE total that we're picking up there, it's about a fourth of one additional cost there. And then the network tech that is being split with the courts, he needs another network tech, so why not just pick up that other half? So, that's not another full FTE either, it's only a half of an FTE. So, I think that three and a half to four, however you wanna lay it, is a reasonable approach to get this department right, and it's being phased in, so that if something's not quite right, when we get to July, we can make an adjustment at that point in time. Yes, Steve?
You know, our Circuit Court is all electronic now.
Right.
And I think we're like the first two or three in the state. Do you know that?
Oh, you mean the, are they the paperless project? We are the first one.
The first one, I have a couple judges come up to me at the bar meeting to congratulate.
Right.
And said, "Well, thank you."
And Judge Zare said, just this last week, I guess, that, yeah, courts are calling, saying, "How'd you do this? How did Roger do that?", to, to make them ready for that move, so, yeah. And then the, and the half of an employee that is split between, the employee that's split between IS and the courts, is gonna go to the courts and continue on helping with that project, so. Let's see, what else? Couple positions deleted, .8 in community health, oh, just one, .8 in community health. But then you'll see down below that, all the vacant positions that are not funded, but we've hung on to the FTE through the '13 budget, so we don't have to go and try to recreate positions in the future, but for foreseeable future, those will continue to be vacant. And then other funds, same, same pay, same raise for the employees, capital projects, and the Veterans Memorial being rolled over again. Court improvements, that project's underway, but we'll need to roll over that money again to the next year. Just like before, we're splitting Gary Elmsted's expenses. I told you about the loggers, let's see, what else? New positions, one in parks, we've added so many parks, and they've added no new employees, we eventually have to put somebody in there to work the parks, and so we're doing that. Family Arena requested three new positions. This is the one we decided was the most needed at this time. It may turn out, if hockey turns out to be a very good deal for them, if football turns out to be a very good deal for them, if they continue to get the shows that they're hoping to get, and are planning on booking, there may be a need for another position or so there, but I'm trying to do it cautiously, rather than just throwing a bunch of positions at the Family Arena. What they'll have to do is work those events with part-time staff, and with the overtime that they incur anyway. So, it'll be a lot more part-time people work, working on those events, and planning for those events, maybe. I don't know if you realize, people, you guys have asked me occasionally, how many people work at the Family Arena? I've always said, like, eight, 12, or whatever the number is, I need to look and see again. You know, I, I forget myself, at an average event, a half-house show, let's say, I didn't realize this, they'll have 125 people on the grounds in that building, running a show, a half-house show, between the ticket takers, the concession workers, the parking attendants, the security, and you, they have 125 people. And so, what do they do all day, when they, on days they don't have a show? My God, just trying to organize the five or six, how many people do we have on the list to potentially work at the Family Arena? Five to 600 people? To go through those five to 600, to find people who, it's not their main job, they work a couple hours in the night, eh, if they don't show up, you know, try to hurt those cats, to be there at this time to make sure somebody gets a ticket, somebody's car gets parked. Man, just, just that event right there, it would drive me crazy, but I just wanna throw that out, because that's a number I hadn't really tied down. 125 people for a half-house show. Uh, let's see, what else? Bobby, wanna talk about the transfer to the Education Systems Fund?
Yeah, last year, we started, out of the Educational Assistance Fund, we started supplementing the employee match, the amount that the county matches on, on the amount that employees put into their 457 deferred compensation plan, it's like our 401K plan. Last year, because of the surplus in the Educational Assistance Fund, we increased the match percentages across the board by one-half of 1 percent. We've added to that this year by adding another quarter percent to the match, the supplemental match, so between the two years now, we will have increased the match percentages by three-quarters of 1 percent. So, when an employee gets into the matching program, before any of this started, the match, the match that the county would cover, the beginning match, for new employees... match, the match that the county would cover, the beginning match, for new employees after their terms satisfied their one-year requirement was 2%. Now it's 2.75% in 2013. So a little extra bump in that. The educational assistance fund is a fund that has a, a funding source that comes from the penalties on, on people who file their personal property tax declarations, like there's a penalty assessment on, on your bill when you get it for not sending in that declaration. And that money goes into this fund and has a very healthy fund balance, even though we have taken steps over the past few years to expand the educational benefits to county employees, putting in, for example, a $25,000 lifetime maximum that employees can, can draw as long as they continue to work here. And it'll let, we also put a provision in the place where they can draw that tuition if they, if they get their degree in two years and they incur $25,000 worth of expenses. Before we changed the rule, they had to limit their expenses to $3,000 a year in order to get reimbursed. Now they can incur all their school expenses and continue to receive a $3,000 reimbursement for every year they continue to work for the county after they get their degree. So, because $3,000 doesn't cover very much, and in fact, at our board meeting today, we discussed possibly increasing that $3,000 annual cap because the cost of tuition continues to go up, and we'll have some recommendations for administration on that between now and the beginning of next month. But the funding source for this is, is not going away. The educational assistance fund has a balance, after all of these provisions that we've added to the program in the last three or four years, we still have fund balance that's $900,000 plus.
Bobby? And so you'll see two positions that, just again, never will be filled, so we're deleting those, and then vacant positions in other funds that are not funded, but the F.T.E.'s being retained in the budget. And I'm going to get more information about the, I, I, I'm not comfortable with explanation on cap and community development, so I'll get a better explanation on that $25,000. Because I just realized that I was saying that, I might have something wrong. I'll make sure I got a better explanation for that in the next week.
Great.
That's it.
Thank you. It looks like a, a good budget. I'm sure there were a lot of hours spent with me together.
I would like to say that the 10% fund balance is something that I've wanted to increase in, last year and the year before was not possible. This year, you know, there are, there are trade-offs. We could do less employee raises, we could, you know, we could do things to try to raise that 10%. And I think, I think together, we should work together to do that over the next couple of years if revenues get healthy and we can afford to do it. Certainly, you don't want to go below 10. I think we've talked about that enough on why that could hurt bond ratings and everything else. But 10%, in my opinion, is still thin, and we should make efforts in the future to try to raise that.
I know that six years ago, my first year on the council, I came in to meet with you on the budget, and you were making a case for 14%. And, and I did some research in other communities and found that that was a conservative, but not overly generous, fund balance.
15 is where I think we should get back to.
So it hurts to see us down in the 10 range. Yes, Joe?
I got a few questions that kind of pile up, okay?
Okay.
On the compression fix, do you have some type of formula that you're going to use to determine how that's equitable?
She does.
So one employee can't say, "Well, he got it and I didn't."
Yeah.
Okay. Now I got another question for you. On the second page, you've got up the top, it says vacant positions, the second paragraph, not funded, but full-time employees retained, and no funding for 13.
Right.
That's kind of contradictory. You're saying, I mean, it's a position that you're not funding, it's currently vacant, is that?
The positions, the positions are vacant.
Uh-huh.
And they're not funded, but the F.T.E. shows up in the budget. There's just no dollars attached to it.
Okay, okay, but there's no, it's no money.
There's no money.
Okay, okay. And then the last thing, and Steve's budget message talked about the SRO officers for Orchard Farm in Francis Howell, and that money was part of why we could fix some problems. Are there bills outstanding to the other school districts, too? Do you think you have the anticipating money coming in from them?
Those are the only two we provide service for.
Okay.
All the rest of the schools are in incorporated areas.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, well, my next question was going to be if we wanted further explanation on compression from Belinda Little. And I take it by your comment that you would like further explanation on the compression issue.
As long as, as long as it's equitable, as long as, you know, there's a formula, so one employee can't say, "I was discriminated against, this guy got it and I didn't get it," or, "This particular worker got it and I didn't," I'm sure you could probably address that.
Belinda, can you answer that easily?
Yes, yes. Do you want me to explain it?
Why don't you come on up?
Are we still using that chart that you, that you used last time with the yellow and the green and the red?
Yes.
Okay.
Take one and pass it down. We have plenty. Um, yeah, we're still using that chart because Councilman Cronin's question was, is it equitable? Based on this chart you're looking at, and... We have any more?
Yes, we have.
Okay, based on the chart you're looking at, we can tell exactly where an employee falls on this chart. Everybody has a number. So, we know if a person is in the blue, the red, the yellow, or the green, based on their PR ratio, which is position in range, and their years of experience. So, based on this information, we're able to tell how compressed an individual is. So what you see on here is we wanted to just take a look at how many employees, your first chart at the bottom left, are not compressed. So we have 431 employees that are where they need to be.
I was supposed to have that one, too.
No, not yet.
Got you.
So we have 431 employees where they, they should be. And then as you go down the chart, we have less than 5% that are below their target. That's what that 5% is. And then we have, and that's 234 employees, so on and so forth. So we know that we do have two employees that are greater than 20% below where they should be. So each person, as I stated, has a place. The chart right next to that is, we wanted to just take a look at the years of service in each of those areas, as far as those below the target. And then we also wanted to show you where the deputies fall and the corrections officers fall as well in terms of that chart. So we do have our years of experience, from 10 to 20 years, those are the areas, if you're an employee in one of those areas, more than likely, you're going to fall into one of our compressed categories, more than likely. So I just want to pass out this last chart because we do get questions along the way as to where each department falls, where the, the deputies fall, so on and so forth. So we just kind of broke it down on this chart. It shows us, our top-left-hand chart shows us how many employees we're talking about for 2012 in the county. 185 employees fall in the one level, 353 in the two level. With our increase that we're proposing for compression, you'll notice that those numbers do go down. They shift to different areas, but that highest compressed level, that one, that extremely behind level, it is addressed considerably. So then we just created a chart for our deputies, our corrections officers, and then our other employees. So you can look and see where they are in 2012 and where they are proposed to be in 2013 with the increase. And then...
So overall, in the county, the people in one, in, in area one, will receive an average 8.35% increase?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And that, that's why that 1, 1, 2, we can't say that the most anybody will get for compression is 2, because obviously, these people are going to get an average of 8.35%. Okay? It's just that when you group them all together and bring it all down, what's the average increase? Because somebody always wants to know, 3.95. Do I have that right?
Yes.
Okay.
So it looks like the people who are really 20% behind, we're basically, we're not going to get them to even, we're going to get them into the next, into the next group.
Yes.
So they'll still be behind, but not as far behind.
Correct, correct.
But there are a lot of employees in the sheriff's department and the corrections department that are part of this compression issue.
Yes. And as we stated when we did the presentation earlier this year, in terms of the sheriff's department in relation to the county, it's about equal. So not the entire sheriff's department is compressed, just like not the entire county is compressed. So, but it will address a lot of those issues in compression in that sheriff's department.
All right. Does that answer your question, Joe?
Sure.
Okay.
Good work.
Okay. Going over the budget, I'd like to try to get through it in two budget sessions and have a third if somebody wants to talk over particular budget amendments that they want to propose or something like that. I'd like to go through them instead of page by page. You take one and pass it down, please. I, I'm not sure any of you do. But I noticed I was the first one to pick up my budget. And so...
Probably the only one.
And I've been through, and I've been through each and every page. So I will quickly tell you that first thing I looked at was revenue, and I think it's conservative as far as the projected revenue. Sales tax projected to increase by 2%. The research that I did showed 2.5. I think that I would prefer to be conservative, so I think that's great. Perhaps some of the other funds might also be projected a little low, but it's always good to be surprised at the end of the year with that. Then I looked at the, at the general fund, and the first spreadsheet that you have shows the total budget of the general fund, both the actual in the first column for 2011, the estimate for 2012, and then the projected for 2013. And the increase for 2013 over the 2012 projected is 12.3%. That's a pretty hefty jump, even with being conservative with the revenue projection. The next thing I did was I looked at what departments have the biggest increases and what departments have the biggest share of the general fund. And of course, number one at the top with 27.9% of the general fund is the sheriff's department. It's, the 2013 is 6% higher than the estimated 2012. So it's a 6% increase, but considering our overall is 12.3% increase, you know, he's fallen behind. Last year, he was 29% of our budget. Anyway, I asked Sheriff Neer if he would be here tonight. I thought the first place we ought to start is with the, the largest budget. And so Sheriff Neer, if you would come join us, and those of you that have your budgets in front of you, it's page 119.
You know, Jim raised the sheriff department bean counter. Since we have the largest share of the beans, I thought we should ask them to make a little counting one.
Nancy, what, what produces the increase, the 12% increase? Why is that?
Well, you can see the increase in all of the different, all of the different major factors.
No, no, I know, but what's, why, how, is there more sales tax? What is it? Why has it increased the revenue?
Some of it's sales tax, some of it are your other revenue sources. You, you just need to go back, that's just the total budget.
The courting fees are up.
The courts.
Yes. Nancy...
I mean, is the economy getting loaded?
Well, I don't want to make it sound like we're going on a spending binge here because the, the spreadsheet that Nancy's put together here is showing our 2013 budget. Our budgeted expense numbers are, are always conservative, just like our revenue numbers are conservative. So our, the, the budgeted numbers in that 2013 column are actually being compared to our, our actual numbers, our actual expense levels in 2011 and what we expect to spend in 2012. So there, there is that conservative factor being taken out of the first two columns here and in calculating 12% because we always budget to the conservative side on, on the expense side as well. So your, the 13 budget includes that.
Of course.
And the, the first two columns don't include that.
For things like utilities or things that you don't know until the end of the year what they're going to be.
Right. And so we always want to, we always budget on a, on a very conservative basis, and as you know, the, the increase in, in pay, the proposed pay raise equates to about 4%. So you're going to see 4% kind of come into, into play pretty quickly here. So, I don't expect that we'll spend that extra 12% in 2013.
Right.
But we, we do have to budget for it as contingency, and we normally see that fall back into the fund balance following year.
And that's the difference between the, the budgeted fund balance and the actual fund balance.
Right.
Budgeted being 10%, actual being as high as I've seen, what, 18%, 20%? I mean, it's just, that's the difference there between what you budgeted, what you actually spend and spending.
Okay, so on page 119, we start with the sheriff's department. And these numbers, I've, I've added the various categories within the sheriff's department. So Sheriff Neer, or whomever, would you like to cover your budget overall, and then if there are any questions, we can ask them?
Yes, sir. I'm not sure what page 119 is because the copy I have here, the financial, doesn't start right.
You probably want to start on the, in the sheriff department summary.
Which is the dollars, personnel.
Yes, right.
Which is what page?
On, on the copy I have.
125.
Okay.
That's the start of the, of the numbers for the sheriff's department, shows the staffing levels and personnel costs.
I, of course, I don't address the payroll information at all because that's basically calculated over in finance, and I think it's been thoroughly covered previously. I show that our operating costs went up about 6.4%. And I do agree with what Bob is saying, even, we will budget for contingencies, but they don't always occur. So what you see here is what we think's the high watermark, if everything happens as we expect. Part of that is like repairs to the radio system, and some of them might be equip, equipment, well, that's all in capital projects now, but we anticipate increases in some cases for utility, or, or phone bill, for instance. We don't always know...
Maintenance contracts.
Yeah, the maintenance.
Old sky.
Yeah. Closed circuits, the circuits we use for the dispatch. Sometimes they'll hit you with a 7% increase like in March, but they don't always tell us they're going to do that. So we anticipate some growth in those each year. If they don't happen, we usually return it back to the general fund, we don't spend it. If, for instance, something came up where we had repair bills of, "I'll just use $100,000 for our equipment," and we have to spend 105, well, then we might go transfer that money from the circuit fees into the, still, the total budget would be the same. However, that usually doesn't happen. We usually are able to return some money back to the general fund. I can't tell you for sure that we, we will, but I think typically we do. I've never really seen a year where I've noticed we spent exactly what we said we would. It's usually a little less. Is that what you see on your end, Bob, when you see the total?
It looks like you're, you're under about almost 2 million.
Under?
Oh, no, I'm sorry, but you are under what you had project appropriated. Oh, no, I'm sorry. But you are under what you had project appropriated.
Well, yeah, but we're not under too much.
No, no, that was the whole fund. That was the General Fund.
Yeah, we try to, we try to do that.
That looks like about $150,000 maybe.
If we can, if we can, we will do that. We don't, just because it's there, we don't spend it because it's there, basically. I always preach to anyone I deal with over there, from the deputies all the way up to-
Especially me.
Treat it like it's your checkbook. If you don't really need it, don't spend it just because it's there. But there are times if, for instance, we budgeted for two lines and we now need three because we didn't know we were going to need three, that's when we'll lose a little ground there. But usually, we're conservative enough in that total. We don't actually have to come back to Sheriff of Finance and ask for more money. I don't think we've done that since-
We've never asked for more.
I've been here nine years and we haven't done anything. So, I mean, that's probably, these conservative numbers are built in all along all the operating costs.
And it looks like the administration even added to what you requested. So they thought that there should be even a little more cushion than what you had projected.
Very small amount, yes, they did, yes.
Sheriff Neer, I know many years at budget time that you have not liked the employee pay, and that's been a real issue with you. How do you feel about this budget as far as the compression and the pay increases?
It's definitely a step in the right direction. It's nice to see that there is movement, and the movement is forward. And at the end of every budget session last several years, as you well know, I said, all right, we can't do anything now, but we have to start doing something in the future. And I wait till, we shouldn't be waiting until November to realize to us we should have done something sooner. So this is a, I'm not going to say it's a pleasant surprise because I knew there was some movement forward. And like I said, it is a step in the right direction. And hopefully, if we don't fall off the fiscal cliff, that we can't make up this year, we'll be able to make it up the following year.
I think that you've done a good job managing your department and your budget. I don't have any other questions for Sheriff Neer, does anyone else?
I would just like to add one thing, and that is, one thing you don't see when you look at the General Fund is the fact that the Sheriff has been very good about supplementing the General Fund with expenditures that he can spend out of the Drug Enforcement Fund, on seizure money. And you don't see that here in these pages, but it's there-
Oh, yeah.
And it makes a big difference in giving us additional room in the budget to address things like compression.
But to think that you've got additional expenses like health insurance, plus you've got another FTE in there, and you're only 6% ahead of last year's estimate is, I think, remarkable.
Especially with the fuel costs.
Just buy more motorcycles.
Is there any, you're getting one, one extra deputy time? Is that what you requested? I don't know where it is in here.
I'd like to have 18, but that's what I wound up with.
How many did you request?
Two. Two deputies and, was it one deputy and a couple other?
One deputy.
One deputy, a couple other employees.
One inmate.
And, yeah, I wound up with one deputy. I don't mind. True report. Better than last year.
All right. Well, that concludes our review of the Sheriff's Department then. Thank you both for being here.
One thing Bob brought up, we are funding, and I bring this up every year too, we are funding probably right at $400,000 worth of necessary expenses to run the Sheriff's Department during the course of the year. A lot of those other expenditures are discretionary. Over a period of time, we're going to have to start weaning off of that Drug Enforcement account because there's no guarantee it's always going to be there. It's not a guaranteed renewable source of revenue.
We hope not.
That would be a blessing.
Would it? Don't count her in.
I hope if there's, I hope if there's bad guys carrying drugs, he gets them so we get them out. I'll put it that way.
But I just want to let out that it's one of the other sources of a considerable amount of funding. Right now, we're keeping our heads above water. We'll just see how high the water gets.
Tom, the one, there were two requested positions. One was the EMA officer.
EMA, yes.
Right. The deputy that he requested is the one that we're getting, we're providing the increase for.
Those are the ones that got to you.
We had to scrub a few before it got to your house.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Those are the only people that I asked to be here in the presence this evening to ask questions of. But we can go through some of the other departments and ask questions of the administration if you'd like. Again, they're in, in the order, the next largest being the Corrections Department, and that one's up 6.4% over last year. It makes up 19% of the budget. And part of that increase again is the two new nurses that are in FTE.
That's a good example of laps that won't happen because we either do the nurses or, or the contracts, and so we won't do both, so we'll increase the laps. It's just an example of that.
Let's talk a little bit about the federal prisoners, the impact that has.
Yeah, reminder, we are contracted for up to 50 federal prisoners. We would like more, and occasionally we do get more. We've had as many as 54, memory tells me. And Larry's always close to 50 on those, so he's keeping good relations with those folks. We like them because they pay real well. The state gives us $19.25. I'm writing through this fast. $19.25. It costs us easily 60 bucks and 80 when you include some of the fixed costs of the building and that kind of stuff to house somebody. We get 19.25, and that's it from the state. The feds pay us 65? I think it's $65 per head, plus they pay us the medical, plus they-
A day, or what is it?
A day. Plus they pay medical, plus they pay transportation. So we like the federal prisoners, but we got to bring people in. And over the course of the years, I think we've added eight FTE directly to deal with. I think it's more than that, but I know at least eight FTE to handle them. They're being paid for. I mean, you know, they're, as long as we keep the federal money coming in, we're paying their salary and expenses, and then some on top of that is for the good.
So that, that part of the budget is like an investment to me. That's, that's getting a good return.
As long as we can keep them, as long as we can keep them coming in.
If we weren't doing that, we could have, we didn't, would not have had to add all those FTEs. But we also wouldn't have.
Wouldn't have the revenue.
Absolutely.
What's the average stay of those guests?
Yeah, I don't know. The average stay overall is, I think it's been around three weeks or so. I forgot. I haven't looked at that in a while. Some stay for a year or two because of some strange circumstances. Most of them are in and out within a day.
So are we just holding them till they go to another facility, or?
We'll hold them until I guess they go to a federal trial, I guess it'd be.
Waiting trial.
Yeah, okay. But, you know, they, we get inspected, and we get very, very high marks for our facility and the way they run the operation. Well, you saw it, you toured it.
Don?
John, did you get your answer? Well, I couldn't hear Chuck. Did you get your answer on how many other nurses we had?
No.
It was, it's four plus the contract that we have now. So, and we won't have the contract next year, but we'll have a total of six. But I saw a very interesting number here. You might be interested in that. That's on page 114, under the workload indicators. About three quarters of the way down that list, you can see the number of nurse contacts proposed for next year, 19,583.
Wow. So they're working.
I don't know how to count, but.
Yeah.
I've got a question about that. And I read the, the CHC, the jail doctoring contracts are in the packet. I don't have access to that right now. I have notes on there. And I got a kick out of some of the surveys just in other counties about CHC. And some of the comments that came back, and one of them was discussing physicals. And the guy, the captain in Jefferson County said, "We don't do that here," okay? And some of them have also made notes about they didn't have dental, okay? And CHC, the contractor that you're recommending, says, um, they, they don't, inmate goes out to, for dental appointments, and then CHC gets the bill. Are we required to give those guys dental and physicals? Because it looks to me like reading the comments from other counties, some counties don't do that. And-
What I've been told is that we provide what we're required to by, by a standard that I can't quote, you know, Steve?
Well, it's a cruel and unusual, what is it, Eighth Amendment?
Well, there is Eighth Amendment, cruel and unusual punishment, and it's a, it's a standard that courts set. And, yeah, I mean, you've got people filing lawsuits all the time because they didn't get the right kind of toothpaste, or, and most of them go nowhere. But I would think, yeah, if you've got somebody with a, with a really bad toothache and you let them sit there for a week and don't do anything about it, he's gonna, he's gonna file a lawsuit.
Some of these dirt bags, don't they, don't they get put, locked up just so they can get medical care?
For a lot of them, it's the only time they get three good meals. Seriously, and medical care, they haven't seen a doctor in years.
Get a toothache.
And they come to us.
Didn't you tell me that your last year in Jeff City, that one of the biggest line items in the Corrections Budget was dental because of all the methods?
Absolutely.
It's 50-
And Larry can tell you, there's a, there's a standard in correctional facilities, medical standard. I forget the term now. He can, he can fill us in on what that is. And the way it's explained to me anyway, is that's the minimum, and that's what we do. We, for example, if they've got some, you know, long-term illness that requires, you know, extensive medication, now we stabilize them, we maintain them, we do what we have to do, not on-
Another thing I saw in those, the feedback sheets in those other counties, I thought was kind of interesting. One of the counties, Buchanan County, said this. In the contract that we're getting ready to enter into for the medical services, it talks about whether the nurses can issue over-the-counter drugs. In Buchanan, over-the-county drugs, the guy said back, "We don't give them at all. They're purchased at a commissary." So, you know, I don't know, I guess what I'm driving at is, I don't think taxpayers of this county owe those guys any better than minimal care that's required by law. And if, if the county, other county can get away with selling those over-the-counter drugs that they're given free to commissary, they're still available to that guy. I don't know if that's something you want to explore or not, but I thought it was pretty interesting. The other thing I was looking at is what that, in that contract that's before us tonight, $65 an hour with their billings for nurses. In that contract, it says up to 624 hours a year. If you, they only use 300. Does the bill have that?
It's less than.
So I mean, it's just, that's just an average? It can go over or under depending on the amount?
I think that's what, I think that's what they have to provide us.
I see.
So that's what, that's what they're contracted to do, and that's what they have to provide us. And we don't need them. We don't call them, and we don't pay them.
Okay. I think they, I guess they give you some type of itemized bill, Bob, then?
We get an hourly, yeah. I mean, it's based on how much you use.
Okay. So these, these folks that from that contract are the people to supplement the folks that you're hiring the whole time?
Right. That's that trade-off Don was referring to a little. And the reason you actually have that contract is because the company that we had contracted with before was not living up to the terms that we had contracted with them. And Larry did not renew it and went out for another one. I can't remember, I should say, I can't remember the name of the company, but they weren't living up to it. They were providing, so far, nursing care.
So the 200 grand a year we spend on this contract is supplemental. That's an addition to the account that full-time employees we have for nurses, et cetera.
If it's all, I'm sorry, if it's all we had to worry about with the St. Charles County jury, we might be able to do a whole lot less. But you get sued in federal court, which means you have a jury composed of people from all over the region. And judges who are lifetime appointees, so it's just, you know.
But I agree with Joe when it comes to things like Honeydew Melon, and, you know, when I see that we spent 200,000 a year on Honeydew Melon for, but anyway, if you turn page-
Wait a minute, we, we spent 200,000 on Honeydew Melon?
Last year, we had that discussion.
Yeah, we had that discussion last year.
Coffee and Honeydew.
We stopped doing coffee completely. You can take credit for that one. We don't serve coffee a lot, and our meal expenses still between 95 and a dollar five a meal.
All right.
Including Honeydew.
Let's, let Larry talk about that concoction, what's it called?
It's like a meat loaf, but, or it's like a-
Yeah, it's a nutrition loaf or something like that.
Nutri loaf.
Nutri loaf.
You don't want to ask what's in it.
We haven't done it.
You're right.
Nutri loaf, they take the meal that would be on your tray, and they just pour it all in a blender and blend it up and cook it and give it back to you, so.
Page 10. When you turn to page 10 on your budget, it shows the actual expenditures by department for each of the years. The next one on the list is Courts and Related Categories. And you'll notice on page 10, about the last 10 lines on that page, with the exception of Department of Corrections, which is the last one, I added together for Courts and Related Categories. Every category individually looks reasonable in the amount that it's increased over the last couple of years. And I didn't see anything that came to my attention to ask, but I wanted to draw your attention to those line items so you can see the increase over the years. But if you don't have any specific questions, then we'll move on to Community Health.
Let's move on.
All right. Community Health is, has very small increase for this year. 1.9%.
Yeah, 56.
And Community Health, if you look on that same page 10, you can look up toward the center of the page, and you'll see the actual line items for the different departments of Community Health. And if you want to go to the pages for each of those items, I believe it starts on page 56. Once again, we have a grant, it looks like, that's a new item for 2013, that $320,000. Can you tell me what that is and why that separated out differently, the CRI grants? Environmental Preparedness and CRI Grants.
I don't know the particulars of that offhand, but you'll see that we have the, the four divisions of the County Health Department listed separately, Public Health. Preparedness and CRI is a new, is another new, uh-
We've had CRI for a number of years.
It must have been lumped in with something else previously.
I don't know why it separated out.
It's, it's been separated out now, I think in, in 2013's budget.
But that was the only question that I had on that one. The next one is the one that has the huge increase, the 47% increase, and that's Community Development. And on page 10, there are four different line items for Community Development.
On page 74, Nancy, you can probably CDV.
It's the Planning and Zoning, the $1,000,000. Can you, can you tell me what that is?
That's a grant that we get every year, and we've gotten for the last couple of years that keeps rolling over. So we've, we've, it's a grant that we receive, so the proceeds are in revenue, and the expense for that grant of like amount is, is in our expenditure total. In the columns of, kind of what I was talking about before, in the actual 11 and the estimate 2012, that grant is not shown. So all we've done is, is roll that grant forward into 2013, but it doesn't show in these first two columns. So I think that accounts for-
Okay.
30 some odd percent of this 46.9.
Okay. So it's been appropriated each year, it just hasn't been used?
Right. And so it's, it's out of the mix in, in 2012 estimate. It was in the 2012 budgeted number for $1,164. It's $1,183 now for 2013. So if you were to add this $1,000,000 back in, your, your numbers would be quite a bit more stable. You've got $3,800,000 worth of expenditure, and the grant that's in the 13 budget numbers that's not in the prior two is $1,183. So if you take that out, you're back at about a $2,700,000 number, which is pretty flat then.
That makes, that makes sense, and that would definitely skew the 12.3% increase in spending this year.
What do you intend, eventually intend to do with that grant?
That grant is, is that for floodplain structure, structures in a floodplain? Like, I'll find out for you. I think it's, it has to do with, oh, no. Is that the one we're doing with St. Peters?
CABG.
Yeah.
Interadministrated by St. Peters. That's where the demolition and all everything, asbestos abate, all that's in there. But it's a rollover thing, the way they explain it to me.
Right, right. And I think that's what it is, actually. It's, it's-
That's where the 21 demolitions we're doing right now, that money's in there. Then we're going to backcharge that against the property, so it should renew it, so.
Right. This is kind, it's kind of a revolving fund grant that when, when we- Right, this is kind, it's kind of a revolving fund grant, that when we incur the expenditures, we're reimbursed by the federal government, and the money churns through, it's in and out for us, St. Peters actually administers the program.
It's for cleaning up the floodplain structures.
And as Jerry said...
That's just one part.
All right, there's a number of housing-related issues that are part of that total grant.
Okay, that explains that increase. Facilities is up six-point-four percent, I didn't see anything unusual.
One F T E, the rest is, his is usually utility-driven, I, you know, if there's another issue there, I don't think so.
And it seemed like they were maybe estimated high, but that's okay.
Mike's a pretty good steward of money in terms of watching his expenses.
The next one, Information Systems, is up thirty-one percent, but you've already given a good explanation of why that is.
It's mostly personnel-related.
County Council is up eleven-point-two percent, we know why that is, right? Well, we hired a new person, and we've had to hire outside legal help, and we've had an expensive year, and I would imagine those suits are gonna continue.
And that also played into the increase to a million-one-twenty-five that we had put into the self-insurance fund, selling those lawsuits that you're talking about, 'cause if they're over a hundred-and-fifty thousand, they go to reinsurance, but up to a hundred-and-fifty thousand, they come out of that self-insurance fund.
Right. Finance is up quite a bit, eleven percent. I don't know if there's any particular reason that one's jumped.
What's up with that, Bob? Bob got a huge raise.
Part of this, again, has to do with the, what I was talking about before, our budget for 2013 is a hundred-and-one thousand dollars, our actuals, though, are about ten thousand dollars less. We have an increase in our personnel, you know, along the, and based on the compensation plan that Belinda was talking about, of about seventy thousand dollars between last year's budget and this year's budget. So, our personnel costs are up about seventy thousand dollars department-wide, and although we've budgeted a hundred-and-one thousand dollars for operating expenses, I would expect them still falling around that ninety-five thousand dollar number, so, you know, nothing. It's on page forty-six, if you wanna look at the detail.
Sure.
It's all pretty routine stuff there.
County Collectors up five-and-a-half percent, it seems pretty reasonable. The next one, though, Election Authority, I don't understand why we're up sixteen, nearly seventeen percent after we just had a big election year, and we're going into no elections. Why is that?
Didn't we add some of those F T E mid-year in 2012, the nozzle fully?
The H O V, it was the Equipment Specialist, I know that we added.
So, we had half-year of expense in twelve, and four-year expenses in thirteen of those new positions.
Right, there's a, there's a new body in there on the equipment.
What page are you on?
I'm on page nineteen, it starts on page nineteen, and then goes over to page twenty. There's actually a decrease in the budgeted operating expenses, and an increase of about twenty, thirty thousand dollars, call it, in personnel. And I think it's directly related to the issue that Chuck was talking about, where we had that Equipment Specialist part of the year in twelve, in their full year of thirteen.
So, in a year where we have no real election coming, we still have to have that much, even with extra hourly people?
The, the election costs are actually in Fund Two Thirty-four.
Okay.
Okay, they're not part of the general fund budget. These are the folks that are primarily there on a day-in, day-out basis, there are a few positions that have to do with voter registration updates that are funded out of Fund Two Thirty-three, but these are the boots-on-the-ground people, day-in, day-out, at the Election Authority, including the Director of Elections.
Is the D O A gonna be satisfied with this one?
The who? I think so.
Yeah, I'm also rhetorical.
Yeah. Yeah, we consulted with him in putting this budget together, yeah. Sixteen percent, though, I think it's, again, part of the deal of budgeted versus actual expenses showing.
Okay.
If you look at, just if you wanna put some numbers into perspective, perhaps a little bit on the operating side of this, if you look at the 2010 actual and 2011 actual expenses on page twenty, of thirty-two thousand and thirty-one thousand, and budgeted this year of seventy-one thousand dollars. I expect the twelve estimate, frankly, to be more in line with what you saw in the ten and eleven actual.
Oh, I see.
Rich basically just repeated the twelve budgeted in the twelve estimate column.
So, that could be forty thousand dollars extra right there?
Yeah, fifty, right, I think it'd be more like fifty thousand. And then those numbers are repeated, then again, slightly down a little bit in the 2013 budget numbers.
Any other questions on elections?
What's, where is that, what is that, million-five or two million, where's that money gonna, what's that gonna do?
That's in the fund, that's in the Two Thirty-three Fund, Special Revenue Fund. That money for that equipment purchase comes from what Rich is able to charge by statute as a kind of a capital recovery fee on every election that he conducts. There's, and most of that million-two that you're talking about is in that Fund Two Thirty-three that is there.
Does the Charter Amendment, Steve, have anything to do with, does that start next year, does that start after 2014, or, with administrative? That doesn't have anything to do with that kind of stuff, does it?
No, that wouldn't be anything.
So, that money just sits there until something else happens, I guess, or whatever.
It's there for capital replenishment.
For, for his department or any department?
Just for his department, only his.
For capital?
For the election mission?
Right.
Just for equipment?
Yeah, we should have that down on the street.
What about the building stuff, like, building?
Is that right? Are there more than one, is there more than one?
Dominion is very close to getting their state certification, we expect it in the next couple of weeks at the latest.
But you wrote that they have to have it before they can get the...
Yes, that's gonna be one of the conditions in the bid, right?
Before we sign the contract.
They have to have their state's certification and their federal certification before the contract is signed.
Also, I guess I'm confused, you're still moving forward with that equipment on that one-point-two million dollars, is that what we're doing, or you guys are doing, or what's, how's that gonna go?
We just rebid it again.
We told Rich that later, later on, we would rebid it, again, once there was somebody else out there, still, the debate will be whether we need to spend the money now, but we said we would put the bid out again, when somebody else was out there in the marketplace, and Dominion is very close, they submitted their equipment at the end of October for testing, and they're awaiting the final determination from Secretary of State.
A question regarding that, though, since the next statewide election, or, it won't be till November, likely till November of fourteen, okay, wouldn't we be better off putting that off? Because if we buy it now, that, our equipment's already gonna be two years old for the next big election, you know?
That'll be part of the discussion.
That's, yeah.
In our office and out here.
And there's also the issue that if he doesn't get it by the end of the year, he loses that grant money.
Well, was there any problems besides what we saw on the news? Was there any problems, real problems, with the big election? There wasn't any, were there?
What you saw on the news?
I know, yeah.
Was greatly overstated.
Was that, that Emily Rouse?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Was that, was that her interview with me?
That was you and Rich, yeah, but he'd take...
Yeah, there was somebody that was complaining because, you know...
It's the scanner stuff.
They took their ballot and put it in a box instead of into the scanner, and then when they fixed the scanner, they took, you know, they took all the ballots out of the box with Democrat, Republican judges there, and they ran them through. And I don't know if this person is a young voter, that, but I mean, for a hundred-and-fifty years, they put them in a box, took them back to Rich's office and put them in a computer in Canada, you know, so, I mean, it's not, you know, my question here, I said, so, that problem, does that justify spending one-point, one-point-two million dollars on a single-source purchase? So, I don't know, I don't know what you said, I don't know.
The system's made that way for a reason, it's got a built-in redundancy.
Exactly.
If the machine fails, that's what those are stored for.
That's why we got forty extra machines.
Machines, yeah.
They haven't even opened yet. All of that's probably down now. Not forty anymore.
Yeah, I don't know if we've gotten into that or not, but some "I voted" stickers fell into the feeding trough of the scanners, that they had laying on top of the scanners, and that's what jammed the slots.
What?
When you go to the poll and you, you get your "I voted" sticker?
Yeah.
They had the, they had torn the "I voted" stickers off of the roll, and they had them laying on top of the scanners for people to grab when they ran their ballot through on the scanner, and...
And one of them got stuck in the...
Couple of them did, so, it was not an equipment failure, it was foreign material in the scanner slot.
That could've happened to new stuff, too.
It could've, yes.
The next category that has a significant increase is Personnel, that's an eighteen-point-seven percent increase, that's on page twenty-four, it looked, or twenty-six, rather.
You know, there's a category which I just realized we haven't talked about, for probably four years, I have really clamped down on training, and I told you all that at some point, you gotta do some of that again. I mean, the only thing we were doing was what was required for continuing education, for people to keep their licenses for a couple of years, and I loosened up a little bit last year, but I believe in training, I believe there are, even conferences, I mean, they get a bad name, let's face it, conferences get a bad name, depending on where they're at and that kind of thing, but I believe there's value to those things, we try to do it very wisely, we take the minimal number of people there, make sure that the topics that are gonna be discussed are relevant to their job, and do that kind of thing, but I have, because I believe it's necessary, I eased up a little bit on that this year, so just as a general expense in some of these numbers, you're gonna see some training just a little bit higher. And Belinda, I don't know if that affects your department, but that's what reminded me about it, that's what reminded me about it, but that's, that's across all departments. I eased up a little bit on those training dollars, not a lot, the budget's still pretty tight from that kind of a standpoint, so you'll see that throughout there, and then, then we did fund that one position in HR.
We have the new position that went in there.
Right, and it's, just so you know, there's still one down. HR is still one down from, and their activity is higher than it, I guess, than it's ever been, or the highest point since I've been here, anyway.
I think the only question I have personally is the category Organizational Development, and it's not a lot of money, it went from thirty-eight-hundred to twelve thousand, I was just curious what that was.
That is the line item for training the entire county, that's what we use to purchase up to do our training, as well as contract with others to come in and do training, so that's what that line item is for, so it benefits the entire county.
Probably some of that money is a request that I made of Belinda to look into in 2013, and hopefully it is, 'cause I remember asking you to do it, I don't know how many dollars she put in there, but I asked her to, we haven't done anything since I've been here in terms of organizational development, in terms of strategic planning within departments and across county government, just all those, all those management issues that you need to address at some point in time, we haven't done any of that. Joe, before I got here, I had done something called Character First, was it? Some departments loved it, they thought it was good, it helped motivate them, it helped their communication skills with their employees, others kind of panned it and said it wasn't worth it, so I don't wanna repeat that, but I wanna go out and see what's available out there for our employees in terms of development, career development, all of those kind of issues, and so she probably put some money into that as well.
Let me add, just add one thing about training also, aside from what the Educational Assistance Board does with the match that I talked about earlier, the Educational Assistance Board is also providing seventy-five thousand dollars a year back to the general fund to offset some of these training costs, so we, we have a funding source, if you will, directly related to education, we don't, we don't pay for the travel costs, hotels, and that sort of thing out of, out of that seventy-five thousand dollars, but seventy-five thousand dollars from the Educational Assistance Board is provided to help offset training costs also.
And sorry, the other piece I don't wanna forget is, a few years ago, we canceled the Exceptional Performer Award Program, that, I don't know how long it had been in existence, but we canceled that, that was a one-step increase for the winner? For those who were awarded, they got a one-step increase, and those were in the days we were canceling, you know, we were cutting everything, and we never did replace that, and so, again, I don't know where she's gonna go, but I said, let's revisit this, this whole issue, and see if there's something that we can, we can do in that area.
Now, the last two years, when we couldn't do much in the way of increases, we added vacation or time off, is that still incorporated in this budget, or did, when we redid the...
When you redid P T Os? Those personal days went away.
Okay, all right. Those are the, those are my questions, if anyone else has any other questions, next we'll go into the different various funds, and we can start that tonight, or if you have other questions on this, you can ask it tonight, or we can do it next time, or would you like any department heads to be here to explain anything? Personally, I didn't see anything, I thought it was pretty clean.
Very good. Do we, all right, do we need other meetings, you think, or what?
I'm thinking, I'm starting to think maybe not, unless, well, we still have, you know, we might have time that we can go through the Parks Department tonight, maybe the Highway Department, and we might not need another meeting, I don't need another meeting, but it's up to you all. I've kind of memorized it, but I don't know if you've had the same...
I have, well, it's for Parks, it's a good one, yeah.
Okay.
Whenever it's appropriate.
And if you decide not to have another meeting, but somebody, you know, finds something, you know, lets know, we'll, we'll go over it, if you still wanna, you know, bring it before the whole body can do that.
We could even add it as a miscellaneous, miscellaneous item at the end of the next council meeting, in case there's discussion, you wanna just do that, and that way we don't show up early to talk about it and not have anything to talk, okay.
I'll make sure Betty is here at the next regular council meeting, if that interests you.
Yeah, I've got some questions, I think that'd be good.
Or if you could get us questions, and maybe it'd be resolved between...
Yeah, that's a better, that's a better way to do it.
And then, if they're not resolved, we can have her.
But if anyone does that sort of thing, like, for instance, by email, if you end up asking a question by email, if you would copy everyone so we all see your question and see the response, that would be appreciated. And Carol and Donna, did you understand that we won't have another budget meeting? We'll just put it on the end of the agenda for the next meeting, okay? Should we start going through the budgets, or you wanna just have a little free time before the meeting, it's up to you, it's up to you all.
I don't know. I'd say we just...
You're done?
Yeah. Unless anybody else has anything, we're just kinda going through the motions for what reason.
Okay.
I think we don't wanna compliment, it's one of the best years we've had in a long time, so, thank you for all your hard work.
We have a little more to work with, which helps.
The compression thing's good, you're working on it, that's some good stuff.
This process, I sit down, I talk with Chuck, and says, here's the four or five things I'd like to be able to do, try to find a way to do them, and he comes back and says, yeah, we were able to do this one, but can't do that one, we only did half of this one, but, but after I, after I kind of give them some marching orders, I don't, I don't have much to do with it towards the end, and it's Chuck, and Bob, and Don, and Jennifer, Debbie Salvo, we can't... She's texting about ten times tonight. Debbie, I remember something would come up, and she said, text those guys, they're on camera. I think I said, thank everybody, and they, they just spend a lot of time, a lot.
I wanna reiterate something Bob said, and I hate, obviously hate to say in a lot of one department, but the sheriff truly comes to the table every single year, without fail, and tries to work with us. He could come in and moan and complain, and, and demand, and all those kind of things, and he has his requests, and he wants things, and we talk through them, we try to work it out, we try to work between the various funds, you know, but he is, every year, come and helped us get this budget in good shape, I mean, he really has. It's a big department, the reason that it's so important to have a good relationship with them, because of the dollars involved.
We really don't spend a heck of a lot more time with the sheriff and Jim Ray than we do with other departments, because they come so well-prepared, and that's, they're our largest department, but if you, you take some of the time we spend on other departments and scale that out to the size of the sheriff's department, we'd have days with the sheriff's department, and that's just not the case, they come with everything right there, so it's... it's very good to work with them, they do a good job.
Okay, if we have questions between now and then, should we send them to...
I appreciate you sending them to me.
Send them to you, okay.
Yeah, get them to the right place.
And Bob and Debbie will figure it out.
Okay, you'll spread the wealth. All right, then we'll adjourn until our 7 o'clock meeting.